Welcome to the City of Claussen Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 21st. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Bob Morrissey from the Church at Claussen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to peacefully assemble here. We thank you for the blessings that you've given to our country over these several hundred years that we've been here. And we thank you that we can have a government where we can be represented by people that we voted for. And we pray that you'd give them wisdom as they make decisions for this city. And it's very important, the decisions they make affect people's lives. And they're volunteering their time many times and going above and beyond. And we pray that you just put a blessing on their life. There's pressure outside when you take a public position. So we pray that you bless their families as well. And we pray for health for each of the people here that work for the city, not just the ones that are up here today, but all of them. And we pray that you would help our city to make the right decisions for the people of the city, but also ones that would be pleasing and honoring to you. We know that you bless places and you make things go. And nothing happens without your sovereign hand watching over as our forefathers made decisions way back as they framed the Constitution and those things. They recognized you. And I pray that this would be a city that continues to recognize you. I thank you that they give important place to opening meetings like this in prayer. And I pray that you bless us accordingly as we seek your guidance and counsel. We thank you for the favor for the City of Claussen. I see the many articles that are written about how safe of a place it is and what a wonderful neighborhood and many kind people. And I just pray for the wisdom and favor for tonight's meeting. And I pray that your blessing will be on the City of Claussen for a long time to come. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Row call, please.
Mayor Lubes? Councilor Ayers?
Here.
Councilor Horton?
Here.
Councilor Olbruck?
Here.
Councilor Woolley?
The first item on the agenda is a consent agenda, which is approving the minutes from our last City Council meeting, February 7th, and awarding a bid for the EyeBack Sewer Camera System to Jack Dohany Company through the Houston-Gaveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Contract in the amount of $149,829.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as listed.
Support.
Our DPW Director, Doug Ballard, is here to answer any questions about the camera system if anyone has any questions. Would you like to comment on the camera system?
Absolutely. Good afternoon. I want to apologize for taking so long to get this back to the council. Obviously, we had the holidays. A lot of people were taking off. Took a little bit longer than I thought. We went through and, Water Department, myself, Assistant Superintendent, went through three different systems. All cameras had pros and cons to it. And after many hours of deliberations, we came up and for the best quality and best quality and what's going to be best for the city and the DPW is the EyeBack Camera System through Jack Dohany.
And I am pleased to note that we are able to maintain the sewer and water system, and we do that by purchases such as this to review what's going on underground and limit the number of water breaks we have. Any questions?
No. You told us it was going to take several months to come back with this. How many different systems did you?
Three different systems. And also, this will be a build time of 60 to 90 days. A lot of other companies are up to four, I'm sorry, for six to nine months build time. So we'll be getting this a lot quicker.
So we'll be getting it in May or so, right?
Correct.
Mr. Pollack, we could expect to pay this fiscal year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more question, Doug. What is, how big a unit is this? Explain how it works, because I'm sure everybody would like to know.
Well, the size of the unit is about 60 pounds. The weight of the unit is about 60 pounds. It's about a two-foot camera. And what happens is we got a system with a winch. It'll go on the back of the trailer and it'll drop it into the manhole, which in turn drops it into the main sewer. And from a manhole to manhole, you could have possibly 300 feet, you could have possibly 600 feet. And we'll camera that whole system, that whole lead, I'll call it, of the main sewer system, find out the quality of the pipe, and find out if we have any problems, issues that we need to address down the road.
All right. Before, we used to have companies come in and do this, correct?
Well, we had a company back in 2007 go through the whole entire city. And in turn designated problem areas. And then we had replaced and relined some of those sections.
Okay. But having this, us having it as Claussen, this will basically save us money.
That is correct in the long run. Yes.
Something we really need.
Correct. And I plan on having at least three to five people trained on this new system.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Row call, please.
Councilor Ayers?
Yes.
Councilor Horton?
Yes.
Councilor Olbruck?
Yes.
Mayor Lubes?
Yes.
The next item is a presentation by Kathy Leenhouts, our Director of Recreation and Senior Services, regarding bike racks and a DNR grant.
Good evening. I just wanted to kind of update the council. You had come to us with a request for bike racks for the city park, and you were hoping we could get something sort of more artistic and interesting. And so the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has looked at several different kinds. They vary very much in price. And one of our Parks and Rec Advisory Board members, Mr. Valenti, got the idea to contact the, I want to call it CEVEC, but I think it's OTAC now, the Oakland Technical School. And they have a welding program. And in talking with Sarah Gamble, who runs that program, they have had students submit designs to do bike racks. And it looks like they have come up with a design that they feel is something they can do, and it's in line with some of the things we were looking at. And it would cost $300, basically, for materials. They would make two bike racks of six sections each, so each bike rack could hold 12 bikes maximum. And they are on break right now, but they are going to mock up one section for us to look at. But I just wanted council to be aware that we are moving forward with trying to find the artistic bike racks. And we're thrilled that we can work cooperatively with OTAC on this and their students in designing it. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Any questions?
Sounds fabulous. Thank you.
Okay. The other thing is Parks and Rec Advisory Board have talked about going out for a DNR grant. It's called a Recreation Passport Grant. And it can be up to $75,000, and the city matches 25% of that. What we were looking at is the Grant Park Tennis Courts. That was one area of the city that we did not address with the Park and Recreation Bond. There are monies left in that Park and Recreation Bond, which would make up the 25% to get those tennis courts. They're not really able to be resurfaced at this point. They were last resurfaced in 1991, I believe it was. And that was also with a DNR grant. So we're looking at going out for the grant to tear down those courts and all the broken fencing. And then the advisory board really thought they would like to only put one tennis court back in with additional pickleball markings on it, so it could be used for either. And then the other section maybe make into a play structure, so there would be more play area at that Grant Park. What we're coming to council tonight for is to ask for your approval to move forward with applying for the DNR grant. The application has to be in by April 1st of this year. They do a scoring point to determine which projects get the funding. And we would find out probably not till December whether we would be awarded the grant or not, with monies not being released until 2018. So what we're asking council tonight is, number one, if you would approve us going forward with the grant. And then, number two, as part of the grant, we would have to set a public hearing so that residents could come in and share their comments or concerns about what they would want to see happen in that space. We would hope that if you do approve moving forward with it, that you would set the public hearing for the next council meeting, I believe, which is on March 7th.
Another fabulous idea. I love to use grants. So I think it is important to maintain all of our parks. Green space is important. We walk there, we play there, and we do need more green space, but taking care of what we have is a great idea. Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to bring up, too, is the senior advisory board has asked me to publicly thank the neighborhood around Hunter Community Center for putting up with the parking situation. When we have large events and things going on in Hunter, as you're well aware, the parking lot is very small. And so extra parking spills out onto the streets in the surrounding neighborhood. And we know at times it's not convenient for the neighbors, but we do want to thank them very much for putting up with us. And on those days when it does get kind of hectic, we try, we try as best we can to get as many cars into the lot and to bring people in by bus, but we do still use those streets. And in the evenings for recreation programming, too, at times those streets get parking on them. So a thank you to the neighbors in that area for tolerating us and our programming.
I'm impressed. I think after all these years, I didn't realize we had a senior advisory board. Will you tell me more about that?
We meet once a month, and it's just volunteers who want to come into the meeting, and they voice their concerns or interests or programs they'd like to see happen, or things that they don't like, meals they don't like in particular. But no, they have good suggestions, too. So we try to meet once a month. It's not very large. Sometimes we'll have three people show up, sometimes five, sometimes one. But we just, it's a very informal time to just share ideas and concerns, and I give them an update of what's coming up and that sort of thing.
Very nice. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Who wants to make the motion?
May I move that a public hearing be set for Tuesday, March 7th, to solicit comments on the application for a DNR Recreation Passport Grant for upgrades to the Grant Park Tennis Court area?
Support.
Any other comments or questions? Row call, please.
Councilor Horton?
Yes.
Councilor Olbruck?
Yes.
Mayor Lubes?
Yes.
Councilor Ayers?
Yes.
The next item is consideration of approving Philip Lampo, Scott Raymaker, and Patricia Waterson to the DDA. The board is down a few members. This would appoint two business members and one resident to the board.
We, after the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, we were going to try to interview applicants on the second Tuesday of the month.
We have some zoning applicants coming up in March. We have met these applicants.
Okay. The, how many applicants other than these three do we have for the DDA?
You've met most of the applicants.
My question was, how many do we have other than?
There's probably six, seven. You probably have not met the last two that were submitted. These names I've been submitting to be on the agenda for some time. So after the last meeting, when it was decided going forward, we will interview them, but these three you have already met.
I know Philip Lampo. I have never met Mr. Raymaker, nor have I met Patricia Waterson.
Well, it might have been at meetings you weren't here for.
I actually have, excuse me, I have a question about the date that's in this motion. The terms to expire, October 31st, 2021. There shouldn't be an appointment longer than four years. So I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, that would be four and a half years.
The nature of that.
That I can answer for you. So if they're four-year appointments, then it would be through February?
So if a member's, sorry, excuse me. If a member's term has expired, the appointment should be for the remainder of that term only?
Well, we have additional spaces besides terms that have expired.
These people are not filling in for anyone or replacing anyone. These are new applicants, correct?
Correct.
So we have three vacancies that we're filling?
Yes.
Okay. Still don't know when those terms expire, but.
So they should be expired February?
It could be. I think Mike has the terms beginning October 31, or ending October 31. We could change it to 2020.
No. I mean, according to Michigan State law, those terms, whenever they were, whatever the term was when they were vacated, is what we should be appointing to.
Okay. Well, it's possible that these terms were never filled, so we could make them effective March 1 through four years. I think the reason that Mike put October 31st on here is generally the appointments, DDA appointments go November to October annually. But it could be changed to make four, since these are new terms, they could be March 1st through February 28th for four years.
The terms on several boards are all over the map.
Yeah, they're scattered. I think the reason Mike put October 31 is that terms generally expire on a date, but it can be changed.
I know one of the most recent vacation, vacancy expires 10/31/2019. So if we're filling that vacancy, that's when the term should expire.
These are not filling, well, they're filling vacancies, but they're not filling unexpired terms, I guess.
So if we change it to expires on February 28, 2021, is that?
We could do that.
Proper way to do it. Madam Mayor, I move the appointments of Philip Lampo, Scott Raymaker, and Patricia Waterson to the Downtown Development Authority with terms to expire March, February 28, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I'll support that. I'm just, I'm struggling with the language of the, "An appointment to fill a vacancy shall be for the unexpired term only." That's from the Michigan State law. So I'm trying to.
Do we know for sure?
What you can do at this moment is appoint the individuals with a term to expire in accordance with the existing ordinance.
Okay. Do you want to modify the motion?
Such as?
With the terms to expire in accordance with existing ordinance?
Okay. So be it. Ordinance. So I move to modify to move the appointments to do a DDA with terms with, how do you want to put that?
To expire in accordance with the terms of the existing ordinance.
Okay. According to the ordinance.
Thank you. Support.
Row call, please.
Yes.
Mayor Lubes?
Yes.
Councilor Ayers?
Yes.
Councilor Horton?
No.
The next item looks at bills to be paid in the next two weeks.
Madam Mayor, period of bills. Support.
Any comments or questions on the bills?
Yeah, I have, and Mark, I know I brought this up, but I do want to talk about it. There's a check item listed for $444,000, with the only line item explanation being that it's for the fire.
I did, I did figure out.
Oh, okay.
What it is.
Yeah.
Almost all of that is George W. Coon drainage debt that we pay to the county.
Okay. I figured that wasn't for the management system.
Yeah, we're a victim again of the one line on that description.
Sure.
But I will check. For some reason, it's not in the detail, and I'll have to give Mike an updated detail list. It should have shown up in there, so you could have saw the detail, but for some reason it's not there, so I'll have to update.
It seems like there's quite a bit missing from that detailed list.
Yeah. There should be several large items that aren't there, so I'll update that.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Row call, please. Oh, did we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Mayor Lubes?
Yes.
Councilor Ayers?
Yes.
Councilor Horton?
Yes.
Councilor Olbruck?
Yes.
City attorneys report.
Yes, you had before you proposed ordinance to discuss regarding the appointments. This arises out of your study session of several weeks ago. I tried to make it as simple as possible, but I wanted it brought under my business because I know there's discussion about reappointments. There were some at that meeting. I don't know whether that's going to occur here, whether you want that in the ordinance. I don't know what the census says of the council. So it's there for your discussion, but it sets it up very simply. Mayor makes the appointment, council approves, provides that anyone, if you want to interview someone or examine their background, there'll be an appointment made to meet those individuals. So it really, I think, echoes what you wanted. And any other ordinances other than the DDA that have an appointment process, it's a little different, are superseded by this ordinance.
So the, as you said, the other ordinances that deal with board appointments will all be modified, so?
No, you don't have to say this is superseded.
Okay. So this will?
Yeah, this is in the administrative section of the Code of Ordinances.
And I would prefer, I know it's a lot more work, but I think it would be cleaner to modify the other ordinances.
Yeah.
If that's your preference, I can do that. It would not be a modification. It would be an ordinance that would delete.
Right.
Sections such and such are the following. It may have to also incorporate a total rewording.
Right.
So I mean, if that's, if that's what your wish is, then that's fine.
I know. That would be my preference.
I agree. We've had so many ordinances that have happened, and then we've left other ordinances on the books, and then we always seem to fall into the same.
If that's your preference, then I'll revise that, and we can put it under the action items for the next meeting.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if there are anything else that you want to modify with respect to this.
On letter A, I don't know if we can clarify the language there. To appoint, the mayor shall have the authority to appoint members with the approval of the City Council. I don't know if, I don't know if that's the wording that we want or not. I would prefer something along the lines of the mayor nominating candidates.
Which must be then therefore approved by council.
All right. Well, this is the existing language in most of the ordinances.
Yeah, I agree.
So if you want that changed, then we'll make it. So if you want it to the effect that the mayor shall.
Nominate candidates at that point for council to.
I'm sure there's some legal precedent that you can look at.
Well, I'm just figuring out the consequence on that.
Sure. But my, my argument with this wording is that it still leaves some ambiguity.
Tell me how.
So the mayor, the mayor shall have the authority to appoint members with the approval of the City Council.
Right.
So.
It's the ambiguity, because that's always been the standard language.
Correct. And it's led to some, so the question then is, can the mayor put before us on an agenda an appointment without the approval of City Council? And that's been a sticking point recently, and it's not clear to me in this language. Maybe it's clear to everyone else.
I can fathom, if you want to change the language, the potential of a Pandora's Box that could complicate things even more. And since a Pandora's Box can have many colors, I don't want to go into detail on that. So I'll make the change, as you prefer, and then just see where it goes when you discuss it.
Okay. You're here for our council as well, right?
I'm here to guide you in a manner that makes you feel comfortable and appropriate.
I'm not sure what everyone else's takeaway from, from the workshop was, but mine was that it was the opportunity for all of us to, at the very least, learn a little bit about the candidates before they were nominated, so that we would understand their background and feel comfortable bringing them on board.
Correct. And I think the language here, I think it suffices in that regard.
But there are some other things, too. Reappointments isn't in here, and we had all, we had modified it before, had a modified application for someone who's been on the board. And you brought up a good point, something I didn't think about. I always felt that if someone has been served on a board for a while, it would make good sense that, again, the chairperson's comments to say they've served admirably, they, you know, chaired several committees, and we'd like them to remain. It goes to the mayor. She sees that they're a member in good standing, and it's not necessarily a rubber stamp, but you would assume that that person would. But then you said, you know what? I'm a new guy. I'd like to meet him. And I was like, okay, I get that. But to go through the whole process for somebody who's been on a board for maybe eight, 10 years, it just seems to draw out the process. And it's not like we've got people standing outside when we open in the morning waiting to, you know, sign up for some of our boards, so.
So does point C make you uncomfortable there? Should any council, should any member of the council desire to meet any appointees? And I think there should be a comma there. Mr. King said, arrangements shall first be made to meet such person by all or any council person with advance notice of such meetings available to all council persons. Does that, does that make you uncomfortable, Jim, with that wording?
No. I think we should all be, we kind of discussed the second Tuesday of the month.
Yes.
Be the general date.
Yeah.
And it would keep us from individually contacting someone and, you know, hey, how are you? How long you been in town? Can I, just, you know, five minutes? Let me know what you do, other than reading the application. I think it's important.
Let me ask this question. If the mayor is now to nominate, are you assuming then that when she makes that nomination, she furnishes to you background information of the nominee?
No more background information that's on the application.
The process going forward is, everybody submits an application. It's a one-page application, and that's always been that way.
That's fine.
And on the second Tuesday of the month, we'll meet the applicants.
Fine.
But in my understanding is whether it's a, it's a applicant or a re-applicant.
Definition of nominate. That's fine.
To me, nominate means place on the agenda for, for consideration. Maybe, is that the wording you want to use?
No, that's fine. If you express your intention, that's fine. You're part of the record then. That is, I just want to clarify it.
If the mayor could, could actually nominate two or three people for, say, you've got four people that she's nominating for two seats. So now, where's that go? Is nominated, is that the proper, you know?
Not sure I understand your, you're saying we're not comfortable with the individuals out of the pool that have been nominated? Well, that's what, that's why they should be individually on there, so that we can each, I mean, we may not always disagree, but one thing we can always agree on, that generally the individuals in one way are looking forward to serving the city, and that's a great thing.
Exactly.
It's whether or not they bring to the table, you know, what, what we'd like to see. It's, it's difficult to, to concur, and it would, it would certainly be nice for all of us to concur with each of the nominations and believe that they're somebody we would like to see. But if you don't know who they are or really have a feel for, for them, it makes it really, makes it difficult.
And this doesn't promise a unanimous consensus regarding that. The goal is to meet each person, review their background history. But placing that name on the agenda remains with the mayor.
Agreed. It's okay if we're not unanimous, right?
Correct. We're all adults. We can agree to disagree.
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else that's substantive that you would want in this section regarding appointments?
I've not had the opportunity really, as I was telling, I've been out of town for two and a half weeks, and I didn't have the ability to really read this completely. I got back in town at four thirty this afternoon.
All right, well, I guess my preference.
I will read this over tonight, and I will email to you my.
No, no, because, no, I, I don't think that should be, we should do that. I mean, if you want to review it, my question was going to be, because I don't want to address any ex parte communications on this.
Understood.
So, so my suggestion would be that if you feel you need to review it, then should it be on the next agenda item, not as an action item, but under the attorney reports again.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I think I'd prefer that.
Councilmember willing not being here, yeah.
I think I'd prefer that. So I will do that and make those changes and put them under the attorney reports.
Yeah, because there were, there were things that I said during the meeting, which some of it, I know that Councilmember Albrecht had some printed comments, but I brought up some comments, and I, a few of them I don't see addressed here. So I just want to.
Well, again, yeah, I, it was not my intention to address individual comments. It was to glean what the essence was of that study session.
I understand. I understand. I understand.
All right.
I just want to make sure we're going to, if we're going to put it, we're going to create an ordinance, we're going to get it done. Let's just get it done right, get it done right the first time, so there's no.
You'll make that determination when you review it. That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Thank you. City managers report?
I just had two items regarding trash. The trash pickup will be tomorrow. I know yesterday was President's Day, but that's not a day that causes delay in trash, so trash will be picked up in the morning. And then we'll have some more information. We'll put it on the website, and then I think it'll be in the, not the next newsletter, but the following, about the rehab of the facility on Coolidge Socrate. There really shouldn't be any noticeable changes to residents as far as curbside pickup until the carts are rolled out, and that will be later this year in the summer. I think that process over the Socrate communities will take three, at least three months. So not everyone, every community will get them at the same time. But in the meantime, I think Doug informed me that they did get more bins, the regular bins we've been using. Those will still be picked up even after the change, so if people want to have one now or don't have one now, they can get one. But if they want to wait for the cart, that's coming later this, in the summer. And that facility will still continue to pick up. They're going to change a little bit what they process at the station, but I, I don't believe anything that people take over there now will be refused. So there'll be some construction on that facility, and they will be directing traffic. So if you're used to taking paper over to the shredder or things of that nature, I think those services will still be provided, but it, it may take you a little bit longer because they're rearranging the facility to work on. And they, they've already started, so that'll be going on probably till the end of summer at least, before they're complete.
With the facility itself on Coolidge, are you aware, or did they mention whether they are going to make an additional entrance or exit from that facility? Because it's really become quite a traffic nightmare.
While the construction's going on, it'll be even more difficult to maneuver around there, because they've had to move the location for yard waste and other things, because they have to expand the facility.
Right.
So when they're all done, I think the flow in the facility will be better when it's all done. I don't know that they'll add another ingress egress, but I think the flow through the facility will be much better when they're all done. But at least for the next several months, it, it will be more difficult to get around over there because of the construction.
Is there an, an upcoming agenda planned presentation by our prosecuting attorneys?
Did you have them scheduled, John? Do you have anything specific? We could have, we could certainly ask them. I think they, they probably welcome the opportunity to update council on things that are going on. So if that's something you would like, we can check their availability and see if they're available next month.
You know, you may want to do it, though, when they coincide with the ordinances that are being revised, because remember, they were doing the stalking menacing, and that might be a good time to publicize those changes as well. So let me check with them on where they are on those, and then we can coordinate with the ordinance changes, which are going to be substantive from the standpoint of repealing probably about seven to ten ordinances, some of which Councilperson Albrecht has pointed out, like backing in, although some of us like that. But, but those will be on. And then there's also some modification of others as far as clarification.
Will that happen in the next month or six months? I'd rather have them sooner than later.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we haven't seen them since they came in and did the last ordinance.
You'll have it four weeks. How's that?
Thank you.
Start the clock.
And. Mr. Pollak, was, was there any resolution with TLP Energy?
I don't know what TLP Energy is. What is that?
That was, per your message, this group wanted to bid regarding.
Oh, you're talking about the gas.
Gas services, yeah. Is that coming up?
Yeah, we will still have pricing proposals for our gas service, which does expire in March, so. Yes, they will be, they will be sent a proposal, so. Sorry, I didn't recognize the initial.
And any movement on reviewing the COPS grant for a police juvenile liaison officer?
I know the chief sent you a report. I mean, it is something we can submit for and see. It's pretty limited as far as the number of communities that get the grant. I know Christina was working on it as well, and the chief sent you a report. If that's something you want us to move forward with, just to see if we're eligible for the grant, we could move forward and submit the application and see what happens.
Was the chief's report recent?
Probably a little over a month ago.
I'll have to look. I'd be interested in moving forward with that. I know when we had verbal conversation, the stance was that this was something that you might negotiate with the union, since it is a four, three-year grant with the expectation of another twelve months of employment.
Yeah, if, if nothing else, it'll be on for the budget workshop, so we can present should we get it, and then what the city's portion of the cost would be. So that way you can make a informed decision from a financial standpoint, and then it would be pending whether or not we got the grant.
Right, right. It's another seventy-five, twenty-five grant.
So when will this grant be submitted?
I believe it would need to be soon, so we could submit the grant application and then make the decision pending the grant.
As long as we get it submitted as soon as we can.
Anything else? Any other business? Onto new business. Once again, Claussen is famous for many events coming up. Our Fire and Ice Festival was well-attended in the delightful weather, which continues today, and I'm thrilled to live in Michigan in February during, during this warm weather. We have, coming up, our goal-setting meeting, February twenty-eighth here at City Hall. March fourth is the Jimmy Marvin Scholarship Fundraiser. That's from five thirty to twelve, which is well-attended by many, many people, probably about fifteen hundred people. It raises money for a high school scholarship in honor of Jimmy Marvin, who died in two thousand and four. So the benefit's been going on for many, many years. March tenth, the Optimist Club is hosting a Uker tournament at Shields Restaurant on Maple. Twenty-five dollars a person. Registration begins at six, and you can contact any member of the Optimist Club or Ellen Lawton at E-L-A-W-T-O-N at Comcast dot net to register. March fifteenth is our State of the City, State of the Schools, State of the Chamber, and award ceremony. The award ceremony consists of acknowledging the Business Person of the Year, the Business of the Year, the Chamber Member of the Year, the Business Putting Claussen on the Map Award, and that all happens March fifteenth at eight AM here at City Hall. Our Police Department is taking registrations now for their eighth annual Bowle-Thon Scholarship Fundraiser for April fifteenth, nine PM at Bow One Lanes. The Chamber's also taking registration for their Swing into Spring Auction and Dinner on Friday, April twenty-eighth, six to ten PM at Club Venetian, and tickets for that are fifty dollars. The monies collected support the many activities of the Chamber throughout the year. Where Youth Assistance is beginning to take registrations for Safety Town. Safety Town will be held in the summer, June nineteenth through June thirtieth. You can sign up at Baker, which is where the preschool is located. We'll also begin taking registrations for downtown trip by bus from Baker to Experience Detroit on May thirteenth. Oh, the DIA, the Detroit Institute of Arts Inside Out Program is coming to Claussen. We'll have ten reproductions at various city buildings and city businesses. The art installation will occur April twelfth and remain in Claussen for three months. On April twenty-third, which is a Sunday, we'll have a bike, bicycle tour, traveling to all of the art installations, led by a DIA docent, and more information about that will be coming. But we're happy to participate again with the DIA program. We did participate in two thousand and twelve, and I was happy to hear at our meeting that there are some cities who participated for a third time, so we have something to look forward to. Anything else? All right, the floor is open for public discussion. And the floor is closed for public discussion.
Make a motion, adjourn?
Row call, please. Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Horton?
Yes.
Councilor Albrecht?
Yes.
And Mayor Loos?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.